Opening statement, and then we'll have some housekeeping to do, trying to remember what we've done in past weeks or months, and then we'll start on the cases. So the opening statement goes as follows. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the eighth of November, two thousand and seventeen, at seven thirty P. M. in the municipal complex. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule on the official notice board in the municipal complex, and by transmitting a copy of the schedule to Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and Comcast Cable of New Jersey, Inc. A copy was also filed with the clerk of Princeton. Could you call the roll for us, please, Courtney?
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenham. Thank you.
Okay. So, the first of the busy work we've got to go through, the minutes of September the twenty-seventh, these were included in your package, and if there are no changes that are needed to the text presented, I can accept a motion and a second for the minutes. Are there any changes we need to make? Is somebody going to?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Could you call the roll for us, Courtney?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Now, we have three memorializations to go through. The first one is six one seven Mount Lucas Road, and it carried the file number Z one seven one seven five twenty. Again, we received this in our package. Are there any modifications that are needed to this document? If not, a motion to approve and a second would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
And we have a seconded motion now. Would you call those who are eligible to vote?
I will. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
The next one is the seventy-eight Stockton Street, which carries the file number Z one seven one seven five two six. Again, we got that in our package.
There's one correction that needs to be made, it's on the last page of the resolution, it indicates it's being approved as a C one, it should be a C two, and we've made that correction.
On the last page?
On the last page, where it says roll call vote on motion to approve, C one, it should really be C two.
All right.
Because that's, that's how it was approved by the board.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Are there any other corrections that need to be made to the document? If not, a motion to accept is modified and a second for that motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Okay. And?
And I'll go.
Have you corrected it?
I will. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
And the final one of the memorializations is two twenty Snowden Lane with the file number Z one seven one seven five three two. Are there any corrections needed in this document? If not, a motion to accept is presented?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
So now we come to what you've all been waiting for, which is the beginning of the hearings for this evening, and the first one is two two nine South Harrison Street, which carries the case number Z one seven one seven five oh nine. If the people who are going to present that come to the table, there are microphones and comfortable chairs, and what I will do is to get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum to the board into the record, and then I'll ask you to present your case. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bridger, I'll just note before you begin testifying that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction, and then we'll swear you in for the evening. You swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening?
Mr. Bridger.
Thank you. The applicants, Wendy and David Ludlam, are the owners of two twenty-nine South Harrison Road, and they are seeking a C two variance to permit parking requirement, or for a parking requirement to permit a home occupation, subject property is located in our five zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with sections ten B, two five three, two five five, and two four six of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right, subject lot is not complying with respect to lot width, requirement's one hundred, the existing is forty-five point five feet. It's also noncomplying with respect to the required one hundred-foot lot frontage, existing is forty-five and a half feet, and it's also noncomplying with regard to the lot area, the lot area is a quarter acre or twenty-one thousand seven eighty, and the existing is seven thousand and seven square feet. The subject property itself is noncomplying with respect to the side yard setback, on the left, the requirement's fifteen, existing is nine, and on the right side, it's also fifteen, and the existing is three. I'd like to provide a little history about the case. The zoning office received an inquiry about a Pilates studio being operated in a residential zone at two twenty-nine Harrison Street, a violation was issued. Staff met with the applicant and reviewed the three options regarding the violation, cease the business, seek a variance, petition mayor and council to change the ordinance. The subject property was, is located in the former township, and in the former township, home occupations were treated as a conditional use, which requires a site plan. All the fees associated with the site plan and the variances were five thousand dollars. Counsel, Mrs. Ludlam appealed to counsel, petition counsel, to amend the ordinance so that it more closely matched the ordinance in the former borough where it's an accessory use to a single-family home, and it's basically if there are no variances and you meet all the regulations, it's just a zoning permit. So, she complies with the home occupation requirements, except she doesn't have the required one parking space, and she's seeking variance relief for that. It requires one parking space be provided for the home occupation, and in addition to the two required parking spaces that are required for the home itself. Subject property has one parking space in the garage, which also encroaches upon the fifteen side yard setback, and it has a nine-by-nineteen parking space located in the driveway in front of the garage, which meets the front yard setback of twenty-five feet, but it does not beat the side yard setback of fifteen feet. The applicant is requesting a variance to be able to enable her clients to park on South Harrison Street. She's requested consideration under the C two variance, and that's a short synopsis of the case. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridger. So, will you be sworn in by our?
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Ludlam, if you both raise your right hand, you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful. Yes.
I do.
Thank you.
And just tell us what you want to do and why we should let you do it, and you've given us some new diagrams.
Okay, yes. First, thank you, and our house is, it's a very small lot, and obviously, it's irregular in terms of.
Could you really speak into the microphone?
Can you?
Pull it towards you, you should.
Like that? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay.
We can record it better than that.
Okay. So, as you can hear, we're not really in compliance on fifteen feet from either side. There's about, so we can't really put any parking on the site, otherwise it'd be right in the front of the house in the yard, and even in that situation, it really wouldn't be in compliance. So, I just want to read you my statement. So, I understand the intent of the ordinance to address the problem of a limited amount of parking spaces on most streets in Princeton. The management of parking in Princeton is important. Parking on the curb on South Harrison Street, however, is a common practice. There are a number of duplex houses there whose residents do not have parking spaces and rely on the legal status of parking on the street. From Western Way to Southern Way, there are typically about eight cars. Some residences' cars are parked during the day and night, service trucks and vans, large construction vehicles, police cars, and landscapers' trucks, with wide trailers parked there, some for significant amounts of time. That said, the vast majority of this parking takes place north of my house, and there's typically plenty of room for one or more cars to park in front of it. I have one client at a time. Cars parked there do not obstruct drivers' views on the traffic flow, views of the traffic flow or pedestrian crossings. I do not have many clients per week, their sessions last less than an hour, and I rarely see them back-to-back. I've never had any complaints from anyone about parking or any other aspect of my Pilates practice. So, in terms of how my practicing Pilates benefits the community, I'm a skilled and experienced New York City Guild certified Pilates, classical Pilates instructor. I've been teaching since nineteen ninety-eight, I taught in New York until we moved to Princeton, where my husband grew up. At that time, I thought Pilates instruction, at least within a room twelve feet by eleven feet nine inches, fell within the category of allowable home occupations. The work I do in that small studio improves the quality of life for clients, which include elderly people. It can improve overall fitness and wellness, help maintain a healthy weight, build strength, improve conditioning, flexibility and performance, rehabilitate following knee, elbow, and ankle replacements, recondition bodies after cancer and other illnesses, help manage and delay symptoms associated with Parkinson's and MS, provide exercise, fitness, and cardio workouts for people who dislike gyms and prefer a mind-body fitness regime that is holistic, and help obese people jumpstart their journey to fitness, introduce cardio workouts safely in a quiet and private environment. A variance allowing my clients to park on the street in front of my house will avoid turning our front lawn into an unsightly parking area. The loss of the shrubbery there would be aesthetically unpleasing, increase soil erosion, and send additional runoff to the sidewalk, neighboring properties and the stormwater drain. In this case, requirement can create a parking space, I'm sorry, in this case, requirement to create a parking space fifteen feet from the property line would not only be a necessary hardship for home occupation, but detrimental to the neighborhood. I put together a PowerPoint presentation that I printed for all of you. Ms. Ludlam, do you have an extra copy? We just want to make, we'll make that Exhibit A one, that'll be part of your presentation. Sure, I'm sorry.
No microphone as an exhibit?
Well, I had it, but I was told the audiovisual wasn't working right now. So, I have, the first page of this PowerPoint shows our site plan, and so Harrison Street is, you can tell where it is, I believe, it's on the far, this edge right here. So, the house is, you just take steps up to the house, and then I've pointed an arrow where the, the small room for the Pilates studio, it's, as I said, it's twelve feet by eleven feet nine inches, and if you have any questions, the next page shows a picture of the studio. And then I took a picture with the wall with the air conditioner behind me to show you the other side of the room. And then, the next picture shows looking down South Harrison Street towards our house, two two nine South Harrison, I'm sorry, and the blue arrow points to there's a pink dogwood, and that's right where the driveway is, on the other side of, the dogwood's on the other side of our driveway. So you can see that the parking issue is, the street parking is really open all the time. And then I also took a picture looking again southward towards Route One, and you can see, you can see a bit of my car parked on the road in front of our house, and you can see the little driveway, so that just shows the location. And then I've taken a series of photographs, morning, noon, and evening, and I've just documented a sample of them for you that show facing north and south, you can see October twenty-sixth, then the seventh, the twenty-eighth, the thirty-first, and it continues November second, November third, morning and evening, and November fourth. And it just shows that at different times of day, the status of parking on South Harrison Street is, is wide open, and I just, I didn't feel that one client parking, you know, in front of the house to have their session would be a public nuisance.
Remind me about the lanes on Harrison Street. If I remember properly, the one on your side of the street is sort of a car parking width wider than the one on the other side.
True.
So, I mean, it has been designed, in some sense, to have parking on that side of the road.
Yes, that's correct, it does, and.
And if I go to Google World and look at it, it had cars parked along it, in at least their.
Right.
Aerial view of.
Right. The section is, as I said in the testimony, it's, it's well north of my house, it's well north of Sycamore, it's past, it's like Southern Way, that section.
Yes.
Are, you know, three or four townhouses, attached houses, that, some of them don't have parking, and so there are usually, you know, six cars at best.
So people do park along there in a fairly regular way?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's regular.
You have shown in your photographs that there is pretty much always space in.
Where I am, yeah. I took these photos standing in front of my house, looking in both directions, and so I have pictures that, you know, you, I mean, you could see probably better in a, if it was a PowerPoint presentation, but, for example, here, I mean, way down there is where.
There's a mail truck or something.
No, that's another one. This is, shows where the people do park.
Okay. Yeah.
It's well up, quite a distance.
There is street parking there, it's used extensively, just a little bit further up the street near Western Way, we're just below Sycamore, across from the Butler Track, so passing cars are accustomed to passing parked cars, but it's rarely used in front of our house, where these clients can just pull right up.
Could I ask Mr. Bridger a question? Sometimes when a parking requirement is needed and there's been a public parking lot within some distance, that's an allowed alternate?
I mean, sometimes when, like in the central business zone, if there's a business that doesn't have parking, they will look, they will do, you know, polls of the street, or, you know, surveys of the available parking on the street as a way to support the variance.
Yeah.
It's, it's a way to support a variance, it has been used as support for, like in the downtown, there's, you know, if you have a business with no parking, there's really no opportunity to get any more parking, so that's typical practice in that case.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have two people to testify.
I'm sorry?
I have two individuals, neighbors, who want to testify as to.
Okay, I was going to ask if there was anyone in the audience who wished to speak to the case, so.
Thank you.
There's a microphone on the lectern, if you'd like to go to that, and you'll need to tell us your name, and you'll need to also testify that you'll be truthful in what you say. Our attorney will see to the latter.
Sir, could you state your name and address first for the record?
Yes, my name is Robert DiBroglio, and I'm with the chief of Resilience Harrison Street.
And Mr. DiBroglio, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that microphone turned on, Derek?
Okay, should I repeat that, or are we okay?
Please.
All right, I just wanted to provide some testimony regarding the parking, as Ms. Ludlam indicated, well, first of all, I live just adjacent to two twenty-nine South Harrison Street, and in that area, parking usually is very light, you know, very few cars there, just north of us where there are duplexes, there's quite a bit of, or quite a few cars that are parked there permanently, or, you know, a good deal of the time. So, there's plenty of parking in front of both two twenty-nine and in front of my house as well, and over the thirteen years that I've resided at that address, I haven't had any issues with clients related to Ms. Ludlam, no, no any other, I guess this is focused on parking, but no issues at all related to her clients.
Okay.
Okay? I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
And you wish to, you wish to speak as well? Yes.
Yes.
Sir, would you first state your name and address for the record?
My name is Charles Bushnell, and I live at two thirty-nine South Harrison Street.
And Mr. Bushnell, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
It will.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to Mr. DiBroglio, I've been a resident on Harrison Street for fifty-seven years and have some experience with the traffic and the condition of that road. The traffic is indeed formidable, but the parking on the street is usually very light until you get up into the Western, Southern Way area. We have no problem in backing from our driveway if there are cars parked on the street, we can see over them and around them. That's not the case in the last year and a half, when a large construction project went on for about a year, three doors up from us in the direction of the Ludlums, where large trucks were parked, and I must say, we had one of our closest calls in backing out of our driveway, not being able to see traffic up the street coming toward us. But cars do not present that problem, and I, it is usually very lightly parked, and I would certainly support our neighbor's request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the case? Okay. Do you have any final words for us, or can we go into executive session and make a decision?
Oh, I'd like you to make a decision here.
Okay. So then, what is your pleasure?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
You say you have one at a time, do you have them all day long? Are they like eight hours a day?
No.
Might you have?
No, I don't.
Might you have them for four or five hours in a row?
From your lips to God, no, I'm just kidding. No, I would never have that. As you can see, actually, I show in these sample views that, you know, the conditions all day long are, there is no parking here, so.
No, I'm just curious, I mean, whether it's, it would be one after another for eight hours during the day, or at night?
No.
So it's just like one randomly throughout the day?
Well, let's say I have someone at seven in the morning, and then maybe someone at eleven, and then four o'clock.
But you might have them all day, if you.
I don't think so.
You could.
Well, it's pretty intense when you teach, you wouldn't want to teach more than five a day.
Okay.
Because you, you give a lot to each client.
Okay.
It's very, very intense.
But you do start at seven in the morning?
I have one client who comes before work, yeah, and again, the street, literally, is like this.
No, I live down the street, so I know what the street is like.
Yeah.
Derek, I have a question for you, on the Western Way and Southern Way, there are cars that park on the street all night long. Are those permissible?
It's a private street, Western's a private street.
Yeah, they are.
No, not on Western and Southern, but on, on Harrison, but up towards, where you're talking about more cars parking.
Yeah, I can't, I don't know if that's permitted all night, or, I, I don't think there are any regulations, but I can truthfully say.
Yeah, I mean, there are duplexes up there, I know the parking is tight, and I, there are a lot of cars there. I do know that there are very few cars parked down where you live, and so, just curious.
Did you want to comment on that, Mr. Bushnell?
I believe the parking that you're referring to is from those large townhouses, where they don't have the parking, and I believe they can park all night, with the exception when the road is snow-covered.
Right.
I think there is a large sign there that explains that, but I think other times, they seem to park all night there, from my experience.
So it's not permit parking, it's just, they're allowed to park there?
Yeah.
Okay. Home street parking was allowed in town. Sorry? Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question. If we approve this, would the approval go, I forget the exact term, like with the land, would it be related, would it's, it wouldn't be conditioned to be just, in other words, when they sell the house, it would still be something that someone could continue to do?
I believe so, I mean, I, I know Mr. Schreiber asked, what's the intensity of the use of the home occupation, so it's possible to attach that as, as a condition if you, but basically, the definition of a home occupation is supposed to be a type of occupation that doesn't give any external evidence of a non-residential use, so I think in terms of, if someone else bought the property, yeah, I, I think the variance would have to run with another home occupation, so that you could tell a buyer, yes, you can have a home occupation, and you don't need to provide for parking on the property, this, you can use the variance. If the intensity of the use is a concern to anybody, then we can speak with the applicant about trying to restrict it.
But the parking is only required if there's a home occupation?
Normally, it is required, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean.
Right, oh, exactly.
If the home occupation disappears, I assume that the owner of the house wouldn't require, be required to have a parking lot there.
That's right.
But visitors to the house could park on the road.
Sure.
Yep.
In the normal way. I don't think we need necessarily to condition it, as you suggest it might be possible. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this? So, do we have a motion of some sort? It's a C two request, as I am demanding?
I move, we re, I move we approve this request.
Okay. There's a motion to approve, is there a second of the motion?
A second.
Do we need any further discussion, or can we call the roll? Okay, Courtney, would you call the roll for us?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you, it's approved.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
The next case is 175 Cedar Lane, which carries the case number Z1717530. And this is another parking space within a required setback. So I'll get Mr. Bridger to do what he did previously and read the essence of his memorandum to the board and to the record, and then I'll ask you two to make your case.
Mr. Bridger, before you testify, I'll just put in the record that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you.
All the papers are in order.
That's right.
Good.
Okay, the applicants, Daniel and Denny Boyle, are the owners of 175 Cedar Lane and they are seeking C1 and C2 variances to permit construction of a parking space within the required setback. Subject property is located in the former township R5 Zone and subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is not complying with respect to the following bulk requirements. The required lot area is 21,780 square feet. The existing is 10,280. The lot width requirement's 100, as is the lot frontage. And the existing for both is 72.53 feet. And the subject is not complying with respect to the left side yard setback. The requirement's 15, the existing is 13.9 feet. The applicants recently purchased the property. Parking space has been stalled along the Sycamore Street facade in exception to the required 15-foot parking setback. Variance relief is required. The proposed requirement, or the requirement is 15 and the proposed setback is three. And they've requested consideration under both the C1 and the C2 variances. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have questions with Mr. Bridger?
I have one quick question. That, that, those two pathways were there when you bought, when they bought the property. Is that true?
I don't know. That would be-
It is, yeah.
You're not sworn in, you can't answer.
Wait, 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 if you're going to testify, we just got to surry and so let's do that quickly. Mr. and Mrs. Boyle, if you both raise your right hand, you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you can answer the question, truthful.
Yes, it was in place before we bought the property. It was in place before we saw the home for the first time as well.
So Derek or Mr. Bridges, how did this come before you?
Well, I was driving down the street and I saw this space. The reason I realized it was because I had just dealt with this property for a big expansion and the architect for the owner had asked, we need another parking space. And I explained to him that to do so, you would need a variance on the side yard or you'd have to go into the backyard. And that was the last I heard of that discussion. And then, you know, fast forward several months later, I drove by the property and saw the parking space and issued a violation and that's where we are today.
But the violation is to, to these people, not to the people who built-
Right, right. It goes to the owner unfortunately.
Good, so would you make your case?
Yeah, I think that kind of helps make our case right there. Where we, you know, from the first time we saw the home in March of last year, this parking space was there along with the fence. And it was consideration for us to buy the home in the first place. So, you know, as we sit on the corner, you can see on page two in the docs there that it's the corner of Cedar Lane and Sycamore. And with the yellow, yellow line right there, we have basically no parking in front of our home. Sycamore is not allowed to be parked on. So, from a convenient standpoint, we clearly would like to have more space to park. And I think, you know, from a neighbor's standpoint, we've talked to all our neighbors, they're aware of it. I don't think it poses any, any eyesores or issues from their perspective. There's no homes over on the Butler Track. There were no homes on the Sycamore facing part of the road. There's evergreens that line up that kind of protect, protect the spot, you know, for seeing it from the road as well. But I think the bigger point is that we bought the home under the assumption that, that this was all taken care of. We were supposed to close in, I think, the third week of May, third, maybe fourth week of May, and we're not able to because the sellers hadn't had all their documents and the certificate of occupancy in place. So that delayed the closing until, I think, the eighth of June. At that point, we had bought the home under assumption that everything was fully inspected, completely up to code, had no reason to think otherwise. So, I guess with all that said, that's why we're here to request to keep it as is because it's very helpful, it's convenient, we want it. It's as simple as that.
Mr. Boyle, you handed out a photo of the house and a little location map. And then you also have, is that the listing that you saw when you bought the house?
That's the, that's the listing, but that listing picture predates March. So the first picture is probably from the May or June timeframe. So it originally did not have the fence or that parking spot. I think the longer the house sat on the market, those two visions were-
So the color picture is as it is at the present time?
That's right.
All right, so-
The garage is used for parking?
It is not right now. It is used, no, it's got kids, bikes, and everything else in there.
And you have what, two cars?
Two cars, yep.
So one is parked in front of the garage and the other one on the side?
That's right.
All right, so we'll just mark this Exhibit A1, just so we have that in the record.
Derek, I have a question. The, for a single-family house, what is the parking requirement?
Two, two spaces.
So this house, according to the application, sits on the twenty, it is 25 feet back from the street?
Yes, sir.
And there's no parking allowed in the front yard?
Well, there's, the parking setback there is 25 feet. You can't park within that setback, so.
So the issue is there was only one legal car provided for this house when it was built? And there was no variance given at the time?
Right.
Whereas two were required?
Correct. There's a lot of situations like that in town, but.
Well, actually, just to clarify that though, it, the garage could be used for parking, right? I mean, the-
Yeah, the garage is one car.
The garage is one and then there's space in front of it for a second one, so that's-
But it's in the setback.
Yeah. So it's, right, it's in the setback, so that's the front.
So that would be the principal requirement there.
So it was built, it was built in deference to the code, no variance was given at the time.
Gotcha.
Yeah, not therefore.
Do you have any other questions?
I just have one more question. The, the distance between the face of the garage and the fence on the side is roughly, do you know what that dimension is?
If I had to guess, it's probably 10 to 12 feet, like from the- Yeah, he's asking.
You mean the depth or the width?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if, when you park it and you pull up a car up against the fence, how far does it stick into the front yard?
I can't count shingles.
I mean, if you, the house is setback 25 feet-
Yeah.
-on the survey and I'm just eyeballing it, it looks like the space between the front of the house and the-
And the fence?
Is around 20 feet.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So that's adequate in a sense to get a car parked alongside it, not within the setback.
It's just the, the issue here, I mean, they have a tough site. They, the public right of way is quite wide on the corner lot. And then there's the 25-foot setback for the parking in the front yard, which they don't comply with. And then the 15-yard, 15 feet on the side.
So a car parked on the side of the house doesn't invade that front yard setback?
No, but it encroaches into the 15-foot side yard setback.
Which is screened from the street.
Correct. And there's a, the right of way is fairly generous in that, on that stretch of town, street.
What about the back area? Is there any, is there any place to put a car in the back or is that, I mean, I know-
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
I mean, it's, the backyard is completely fenced in. Unless the entrance came from Sycamore, which I don't, I don't think it's really practical. That'd be the only way to do it.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case?
Sorry, just to your point.
I'm sorry.
The setbacks for the parking in the rear would be 15 feet from the rear property line, 15 feet from both side yards, which, I mean, you could, it would be right in the middle of the yard if you put a space in the back.
You'd have to drive around the house and park in the yard.
So you have no intention of using the garage for parking?
Once we get it full, I wouldn't say we're fully moved in yet. We've been here a couple of months, but at some point, yeah, we do plan to. I don't, I don't know exactly when. And I don't know if your car would even fit. An SUV couldn't even fit in the, in the garage itself, so.
Yeah, I understand only one car will fit. It's a small garage, but that would be-
Hope to someday.
Only one car on the outside and one car on the inside and-
Ideally, yes.
I mean, that's why they built garages, but I understand everybody stores stuff-
Yeah, yeah.
And leaves the car out front. You're asking for a variance, I'd like to, I would hope that one of the cars would be-
Yeah.
As a garage.
That's our plan.
I don't, I don't know how we, how we enforce that, if that's where we go with this, but.
So, what is your pleasure? What are the comments we should insert?
Well, in my opinion, they bought in.
Did you want to ask the public?
Did you open it to public comment?
I did, and nobody, nobody blinked. Oh, do you want to talk? I'm sorry, I didn't see you before. So you saw what we do.
In La Costa Barra, living on 245 Moore Street, and I was, yeah, shall I swear first?
Swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm, Danny and Dania's real estate agents, I represented them buying this. And I also lived in that area for over 20 years myself. Now, on the picture here, that's newly laid there, because that picture is from the, from Trend, the listing service. So it doesn't look that bad now. If you even come close to the house, you can hardly see these because they kind of, the grass is overgrowing it. So it's not very unsightly.
So you're saying grass is growing through this whiteness?
Yes, yes, so, so.
Concrete in the ground?
Yeah, it's these blocks that-
Yeah, with grass growing on.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just like where your car, your, I'm going to recall it, tires hit the ground, it's covered. There is no, as you guys know, on the other side of Sycamore, we have no idea what's going to happen, but it's the Butler's Track and it's, there's totally empty. So there's not a neighbor on that side. It's, if they would be irritated by having two cars next, I mean, to each other. And I think it's a big problem, what Derek is talking about, that really the only legal problem, parking is inside the garage, but that's a whole other meeting, right? But, so when we all did this agreement, there was then two legal spots, but, so I think that it's, should be approved.
What, what were the two legal spots?
So, we thought it was too legal because there was one on the side away from the setback, right? And one in the garage. Because as you say, right, Derek?
What made you think that?
Hmm?
Where did you, what made you think it was legal?
Because it was there. It was approved. It was the park, the driveway was present.
Well, the driveway is necessary to get into the garage.
Right, but I'm actually just noting what Derek is saying, that it's only one legal parking spot then, right?
It's only one legal parking spot. The other spot was never approved legally, but it exists.
Right.
And, and the real estate listing only listed one parking spot.
Right.
That's in the attachment.
Right, right.
It was only expected to have one parking spot until the race.
As Danny said, that we had the CO, the approval of this property was ongoing. And then they got the certificate of occupancy the last day, I think, before we closed. And you would think then that this was approved.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not blaming them.
The, no, not them, the builder, the builder, yes.
Misled them.
Let me try and understand. There's been no prior approval for any parking on this?
The builder through his architect specifically asked about putting a space here. I advised him he needed a variance and that was the last I heard of it.
But there's no formal approval of doing that?
No, this would be the formal approval that we would need.
Yeah. And I agree, the concrete stuff with grass growing in is quite attractive after a few years. The town has done that at the end of Bainbridge where it didn't want vehicles to drive through, but it wanted a fire access. And you mow over the top of it, it looks nice, but you don't sink in in a wet, muddy day.
But there's still a car on top of it.
There's still a car on top of it, that's right. Sir, okay, thank you very much. Did you want to say something as well? Then would you come forward and go through the ritual?
Hi, I'm Julie Harrison, 121 Jefferson Road. Sorry, I've got a cold.
We just need to ask you, swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes, yes. Mr. Floyd, you just asked about the MLS listing. I have it with me. With parking, it says one car garage attached, built-in driveway parking. So it was, it was led to believe, it wasn't, it didn't say one car parking on the garage. That's all I have to say, I just, I had it with me, that was all.
So when they bought it, they bought it-
With that, with that.
On the basis of a document which suggested parking was legal in the driveway?
Yeah, yeah.
So our real estate agents are irresponsible because of this.
It does say legal, but not, it does say- Yeah, so that's what it said on Trend.
Ms. Harrison, were you the, one of the real estate agents involved?
I'm Inglis' assistant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I carry the paperwork around like a lackey. Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out. It didn't say one car parking on the garage on the driveway. It just said one car garage.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
So, back to where I was.
Yeah, back to-
The, the Boils seem to have inherited a non-complying situation.
Yeah.
Through no fault of theirs, maybe through other people's fault, but it was represented to them that they had legal parking. I think that, I mean, I feel that, that the parking on the side is reasonable. It's screened from the street. I'm a little concerned about the grass block because you have to have good aim to get on the two pathways. But that's neither here nor there, they'll, they'll deal with that. But I'm comfortable with the, with the space on the side and the adequate screening and the fact that, that the space goes, I, again, I can't tell the exact dimension from the front of the house to the fence, but the parking space will substantially, it, most of the space will not be in the front yard on, but obviously it'll be on that side yard. But it is screened from there, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this and I would-
Are you going to make a motion to that effect?
I would make a motion to approve it.
So we have a motion?
Mr. Cohen, as the C1 or C2?
C1.
C1?
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Well, just from, and so the hardship, you would say the hardship then is the size of the side yard or?
Could be the width of the lot.
The width?
It's an undersized lot.
Okay, all right.
I can say that.
So you seconded the motion?
I would second it, but I do have another question.
Well, once you've seconded the motion, it's open for discussion.
Okay.
So if you second it, then now you can say the case.
I second it.
Good, so we have a motion and a second, so you go.
Is there anything that will prevent them from paving this in the future? Should they have a desire to do that?
They would need to come in and file a permit, just probably for stormwater management. If you grant the variance, the perimeter of the space, I don't think is really going to change because it seems to be wide enough to accommodate a- to change, because it seems to be wide enough to accommodate a good-sized car, so, I mean, it, I don't think it would create more than 400 square feet of new net impervious. It looks like, even though it was done without approval, they did try to minimize the impact, you know, on the stormwater and drainage and that type of stuff, and they did screen it, and...
Well, water goes down between these zigzags, and...
Yeah.
My experience with, the only piece I know where it's done that way is that it doesn't flood, it just doesn't leak, soak in as it would in a normal piece of grass. Are there other comments or questions? If not, are you sorry? Did you, what's the phone, did you?
Um, no, you know, I did say earlier I'd like to see them use the garage for the car, I mean, rather than having two cars out in front, I, but I understand that's widespread to, right, and you can't enforce it, to our terms.
Okay.
I just have one comment, which is that, I mean, you know, as we pointed out, this is not the fault of the applicant that this happened, but I think it's, you know, it's worth, it's worth thinking about the fact that, I mean, it seems like what happened here was the builder built something, they came to Derek, he said they needed a variance, so then they just ignored that and put it in there and sold it under the auspices of having parking, it doesn't really have approved, and then the future owner has to come and, you know, and ask for this variance, and I think, you know, it's just, it's worth thinking about how we can avoid, you know, this type of precedent in the future.
It's almost impossible. You can't govern anything anyways.
Well, if, if we don't allow it, then people might feel that it's not a good idea to do, to go ahead and do that.
I think we should call the roll and ask for the discussion.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
No.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Sorry?
You're out of order.
Yes.
Oh, Floyd, I...
Yeah, I know you want to move the meeting on, but yes, slow down.
I'm sorry, did you say yes?
I said yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we now have 26 Moore Street, I guess, and this has got a number which is different from the one that was handed out on memorandum, it's Z1717-534. And I'll ask Mr. Bridger, as before, to read the essence of his memo to the board, to get it in the record, and then invite you to make your case.
And Mr. Bridger, before you testify, I'll just note for the record that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Good evening again, the owners, Peter Zago and Catherine Widener, are the owners of 26 Moore Street, and they're seeking a C2 variance to permit the construction of a covered rear porch landing entrance to the back of their house, and the approval of two sheds in exception to the required setback. Property is located in the R4 zone, and it's subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations pursuant to Section 178253 and 257 of the Princeton, former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right, the subject lot is non-complying with respect to lot depth, the requirement's 100, the existing's 81.36, and the subject property is non-complying with respect to the rear yard setback, the requirement's 35, the existing is 24, and the accessory structure, the southern shed, I guess along Moore, right?
Willow?
Willow? Willow is, the requirement's five feet, and it's four feet, and then the other shed, the requirement is, well, that's, the one that's four feet is right next to your back door, and that would be on the Moore Street, and then the one on Willow is a few feet off of there, it's like 3.7 feet, and again, the requirement's five feet. The history, zoning history of property was granted a variance to permit a third-floor addition several years ago, copy of that is enclosed, and I'll just go through some of the variances, for the proposed porch, it's four feet, five inches by 12 feet, six inches, covered rear entry to the house, the applicant is removing the second-floor balcony on the rear elevation which approaches into the rear setback, the covered porch or landing will require the following variance, the requirement's 35, and the proposed setback would be 20.76 feet, and as I mentioned earlier, the accessory shed on, I guess, the Moore Street to the left of the rear of the house, the requirement's five feet, and the setback is .4 feet, and the shed fronting on Willow, the requirement is actually 15 feet, because it's a prevailing front yard setback, and sheds are not allowed in front yards, and the borough of property on a corner has two front yards for accessory setbacks, but not for the main dwelling, but, just to give you a little background there, so the setback requirement's 15, the existing's 3.7, and they've requested consideration under the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
This is two lots?
It is two lots, well, I mean, they're merged for zoning purposes, but...
But so, so any change in, if this, just for informational purposes, if this lot were to be sold, if they would take the one lot and go to sell it, they would have to come back in?
They couldn't sell the two lots independently.
They couldn't separate the two lots.
In fact, I mean, yeah, they're right, because they need both lots to support the coverage and the FAR of the house and that type of stuff.
Mr. Moore, why don't we, I'm sorry, Mr. Zago, why don't we swear you in? Is your wife going to testify too?
Maybe.
Maybe, all right, then, if you'd, both raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. You have the floor.
Okay, we, Catherine and I bought the house in June, and the earliest part of the house was built around 1840, and then the 75%, the rest of the house was built over time. That original portion is about 13 inches below, lower elevation on the first floor than the rest of the floor, and for reasons of accessibility and safety, we decided to raise the lower portion of the first floor, so that in fact, the entire first floor would be on the same level. The same situation was on the second floor, and we've done that as well. We hope that we're going to be there till older age than we are now, and we certainly want to make sure that it is as safe as possible and barrier-free as possible. By raising the floor on the first floor, that has led to the need to raise the stairs in the backyard that leads to the back door by that same 13 inches, and that required a variance, because the backyard setback does not beat the 35 required feet, the existing is only 19.8. Since we're building the back stairs, we also would like to put a landing on that stairs, we'd also like to put a railing on the stairs, we'd also like to put a cover on the stairs, all of which we feel makes the entry safer. Other than the rear yard setback, to the best of my knowledge, the back stairs meet all other requirements, all other zoning requirements. We, it doesn't have any problem with coverage, doesn't have any problem with FAR, doesn't have any problem with side yard setback requirements either. Furthermore, we have taken down a balcony that's on the third floor. Was, that's right, was on the third floor.
Was on the third floor.
It's gone, and between removing that and removing the existing stairs, so that we can make higher stairs, we basically are reducing the, we're actually adding eight inches to the backyard setback, so we're actually contributing eight inches more. So that is the situation with the back stairs. When Derek was reviewing our application, he discovered that there wasn't prior approval for the two existing sheds, neither of which meet the setback requirements, so we're requesting that there be approval for those sheds, they've been there for over 20 years, and we certainly didn't realize that there hadn't been prior approval.
They have things for looking after the garden or something?
They will, they will, yeah, yes.
They will have garbage cans, recycle cans, bicycles, and garden tools.
Okay.
And they're, they've been there for 20-plus years, and they're behind a six-foot fence, and they are not visible to the neighbors, the upstairs third-floor balcony was visible to the neighbors, and that's gone now, so what we're doing is less visible, and the sheds were, are behind a six-foot fence, which was slightly falling apart, which we've just shored up, and so it's neater than it was since we moved in.
Also, in fact, if the sheds had actually met the setback requirements originally, they would actually be more obtrusive to the neighbors, because they'd be in the center of the backyard, so anyone from the second floor, or in the case of the townhouses across Willow from the third floor, those sheds would be more noticeable than the way they are now, since they hug the six-foot fence on the perimeter of the property.
Can I ask you about the stairs that you're proposing? This is to make handicap access more easy, effectively, you, I mean, you've raised, if I understand you, you've raised part of the floor inside the house.
Yes.
Give you a flat floor.
Yes.
And you're now adding a stair outside to face you up that much.
Yes.
Have you sort of putting a ramp instead of a stair? A wheelchair goes up a ramp, and people can walk up ramps, but stairs tend to be difficult.
Well, we hope we don't need ADA, you know, need standards.
No, I agree, but I...
And we're more concerned when we raised the first-floor level, so that it was, we were just concerned about inadvertently tripping, breaking a hip, whatever, it wasn't a matter of needing ADA, you know, required barrier-free space.
Yeah.
And we've looked into the possibility of putting a ramp if we need it, and we believe we would be able to do that.
You would be able to do that.
I believe we would be able to do that, yes, correct.
I'm coming into the age group, I worry about those things.
You don't look it.
I'm still coming into it, though.
So are we.
You mentioned you shored up the sheds a little bit, do you have any plans to replace them down the road?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
Actually, we didn't shore up the shed, we shored up the fence on the perimeter of the property, just because over time, it just hasn't, again, we haven't even moved in yet, but just as good neighbors, we wanted to make sure that they were structurally sound. And then, in the case of the sheds, they're in pretty good condition, our assumption is that if they ever need repair, we'll certainly be able to repair them, we would intend to repair them.
So I drove by there today, and in the back corner, all I, I didn't really see two sheds, I didn't get out of the car and wander around in the yard, because I didn't feel like doing that, but...
Yeah, they're virtually invisible.
Yeah, you would have to look over the fence to see the shed.
But I did, so what did I see in the, what did I see? Because I saw a peaked roof that looked natural.
That is, in fact, when you were on Willow?
Yes.
And you looked, yeah, in fact, there's a photograph in the package that we gave you, I think it's the last photograph in the package, that peaked roof is whatever is visible of the shed, that's correct.
That's one, and then there's one like it on the other corner?
No, there's a much smaller one on the left-hand side of the park, the property, again, behind the fence, you can probably see six inches of roof, but it's behind the fence that blocks off, the driveway has a fence, and then the fence goes around the corner, and the shed is right there in that corner.
Okay. Question, further?
I have a question, are you wanting to hear the public?
Yeah, please do.
When you look at the, when you look at the surveys that are provided, there's a sewer that runs diagonally through the properties, is, who owns that sewer? Is that the municipality who owns that?
I believe that's not extent, that actually, I don't believe that's extent, I don't think it's there anymore.
You don't think it's there, okay.
When they did the Willow townhouses, they reconstructed Harry's Brook, but I don't know about the sewer easement, you know?
The only reason I ask, the way it's shown on here, it's very, very close to the rear corner of the house.
Yeah.
And there's no easement.
No, I noticed that.
Is this the sewer line?
I think we were told that that sewer line is not there.
Okay, all right.
We, I asked on that, and we were told that that sewer line was a ghost line.
Okay.
They were going to do that, and they didn't, there's an easement for it in case it ever needed to be done, but it's not there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? Do you want to come forward again, and? You've been sworn, and so you don't need to go through it again.
Yeah, okay, the sewer line is not there anymore, so this goes up and down the street instead, on Moore Street. I mean, so it's not, it says easement on the prop, on the survey, but it's not going across it.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
So what did you say?
What'd you say?
Really? Is that bad?
It's not working, and we can't...
Okay, the sewer line is now going up and down Moore Street, so that on the, on the survey, it was dotted as an easement, it's no longer a sewer.
Okay, so it's abandoned, okay.
Yes.
That's fine, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. What is your priority?
I'm comfortable with the addition of the stair, the ramp is a good idea, but the ramp could be something that happens later, if you need it, if you want it. The sheds seem to be, well, the one on Willow is really screened from the street.
Yeah.
The other one, very close to the property line, but the, there doesn't seem to be an objection to it from the neighbor, and it's been there for a long time, so I would, I would also...
Don't tear it down.
I would, don't tear it down, right, exactly, but, so I'm okay with the application, I would recommend we approve it.
But it's a C2, isn't it?
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
You'll second it? Is there any discussion of the motion? So Claudia, could you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, the last case of the evening, I hope, is 911 Aiken Avenue, and it carries the case number Z1717-544. By now, you've seen too many people go through this ritual, and Mr. Bridger will read his memo to us while you're handing those out, and then you can make your case. And I assume all the paperwork is correct.
That is correct.
Good.
Okay, excuse me, the applicants, Jennifer Gokhan and Robert Finnegan?
Thank you.
Are the owners, along with Catherine Hedges. are the owners along with Catherine Hedges and Jennifer is the applicant. They are seeking C-1 and C-2 relief to permit the installation of two natural gas generators in exception to the required building coverage. Property is located in the R3 zone of the former Princeton Borough and is subject to the land use regulations in accordance with Section 178241 and 245. The existing two-family use is permitted as a right. Subject lot, uh, subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk requirements and the subject property is non-complying with respect to the smaller side yard requirement of eight, the existing is 5.7. It's non-compliant with respect to the combined side yard requirement of 20 feet, the existing is 11.6 and it's non-complying with respect to the 25 percent building coverage whereas the existing is 29.1. The subject property was granted variance relief in 2005 to permit the construction of a detached garage at the rear of the subject property in exception to the required building coverage. Copy of that resolution is attached.
That's not, there's the variance.
It's the porch or the rear, rear addition, right?
We did an addition.
Yeah, excuse me.
The garage was already there.
Yep, you're correct, I realized that as I said it. So right now, the addition of the two generators in the front of the property increases the building coverage one-tenth of one percent from 29.1 to 29.2 percent and they've requested both C-1 and C-2 variance consideration. And that's my synopsis. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
So Derek, this is just purely coverage and?
That's all it is, it meets the front yard setback issue. They're even going to be screened, there's existing vegetation there and she'll testify for the reason, for the generators, but...
And we'll swear you both in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Great.
And I'll give you a copy of this. And actually, I also, oh, did you grab the other, after David? You give it to her, okay, great. So yes, we moved into this house 11 years ago after adding the addition to the back and we were moving from very far away on Murray Place, right around the corner. So we knew that there were water issues in the neighborhood. We had had flooding in our basement at Murray Place. There had actually been flooding at this house before we did the addition in the basement and it just seems to be a pervasive issue within the neighborhood. And we happen to live in one of the lower properties, so actually, all the yards on Murray Place are just slightly higher than our backyard. And we're right there with like our entire long backyard with all the yards coming down. So when there are heavy storms, the water comes and actually can pool and collect in our yard. But the real issue that the neighborhood seems to have is that a lot of the water comes up through the slabs into the basement. And so we had had a couple of minor floods in the first couple of years that we lived there, you know, where you'd get an inch or two of water on the basement floor and throw away some cardboard boxes and start over. And then during Hurricane Irene, which I think was 2011, if I'm remembering, we sustained about $50,000 of damage to the house when the power went out for a day or two during which there was torrential rain. And we had to pull out a lot, you know, we lost a lot of furniture and possessions, but also drywall and had to dry out and get a remediation service in. So since then, every time it rains, I get nervous. And Rob reached out a couple of years ago to the engineer to talk about whether there was any remediation that could be done because like one house on Murray Place had previously, I mean, probably a decade or two ago, had the university put some kind of metal plate down under the ground to prevent water that was coming from the university property. So we inquired as to whether there was any kind of structural thing that we could do in the area to reduce the amount of water that tends to land at our house almost more than anyone else's. And we were told there really wasn't anything that we could pursue with the town to help remediate this issue that we experienced. So after sort of, we, you know, having other minor things since Hurricane Irene, we finally decided that we needed to address the issue in a more meaningful way. So last year, we put in a French drain around the perimeter of the inside of the garage, sorry, basement, additional two pumps. So the house, as you can see, is a duplex. We own both houses under a single deed, but we treat each half like whatever we do to one, we do to the other. So in the addition portion, we had already put in a sump pump, which had never existed before, so that was 11 years ago. So we added last year a second sump pump to each side and the French draining. So we're kind of ready to deal with anything that comes our way unless we lose power. And so since we both travel sometimes, I mean, we do have a portable gas generator right now where we have to haul in every time there's a storm and we're not sure if we're going to need it, you have to buy gallons and gallons of gas and wonder what you're going to do, which is not great. And when we travel for work, my poor 75-year-old mother is constantly like, what am I going to do if a storm comes while you're not here? So essentially, for everyone's peace of mind, we are hoping to be able to put in automatic backup generators that will connect to, you know, a transfer switch and gas line. And I gave some photos so you can see sort of when you're looking from the sidewalk to the property from each side. The landscaping on the 9 Aiken, which is on the upper right corner, is a little heavier so you can't even see the place where we put it and we intend to put more landscaping after the installation because some of that will have to be moved actually in order to get the, you know, just re-diggered to fit the generators in there. So that is why we're here.
These are air-cooled, aren't they, the colors? And presumably they're oriented so that the ejected air stays on your property rather than blowing over into the neighbor's yard, is that right?
Yeah.
That means that there will be less noise transfer. They're not particularly silent.
No, they're not. I mean, I think they're a little...
I installed a slightly different brand because I had exactly the same problem.
Yeah, I mean, they're a little, I think they're a little quieter than the portable version that we currently have.
Yeah, no, portable ones, you don't turn on when you're not there.
Well, that's, that's the true problem, but also, you know, this would probably be a bit quieter. There are other people in the neighborhood that have generators, so obviously, in the case that there's a true emergency, we hear them running. I think it's the case of many neighborhoods now, so, yeah.
Have the neighbors made any comments about this or haven't you talked to them?
They have requested whether they can come over and charge their electronics and use our internet and put their food in our freezer. So that's basically the response that I've gotten is, oh, great. And one sent us a picture of lots of very long extension cords and said, as long as I can connect these to your house when a storm comes, I support you.
Well, there's an outlet for an extension cord.
Exactly.
Did that with my neighbor home on occasion, ran 200 feet.
So that's about the response that we've gotten from most people, you know.
I'm sorry. I don't understand duplexes very well, but you own both sides of it. Is there any way to use one big one instead of two smaller ones?
I talked to a couple of different electricians about that and because we have two separate power supplies, they highly recommended against it, that that was not the way to do this appropriately. So, I mean, believe me, that would be cheaper and I kind of wanted to do that, so I asked that very question. But it really wasn't the right way to do it and so at this point, I'm trying to get the problem resolved.
And inside the house, they're putting in a complete breaker box?
Yeah, like a standard transfer switch that transfers, it's a automatic...
You're not, are you transferring wires from the existing box into that one?
I wish I totally understood. I've met with three electricians.
I was going to just say, that's a bad idea. It's better to have a single breaker box that you just flip from one to the other, otherwise the one will become a stay-out.
And it's automatic and then it balances the power. It's technically, like if we ran everything, which I can't imagine doing because honestly, I only care about my pumps and maybe the refrigerator, but I really couldn't care less other than keeping water out. It automatically balances like what can turn on, so in other words, like it won't turn the air conditioning on if it's hot out. It will just make sure that the critical circuits are covered if there's a storm.
Ms. Gigan, you, you took these photos, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll mark this as Exhibit A and it will be in the...
Yep, sure.
Any questions? PSENG is so unreliable, it's really worth one looking at.
I put a generator in, I put a generator in right after, right after the, right after Sandy.
I know, there's nothing like, once you live it, you're like, I don't want to do this again.
I got tired of going to the gas station every morning.
Yeah.
And the noise and everything else, yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we need, yes?
Yes, I move that we accept this.
Okay. The second for the motion?
I'll second.
Do we need any further discussion? Okay, Claudia, would you be...
Is it a C-1 or a C-2?
Just a C-1, there's nobody in the audience.
C-2? Is it C-1 or C-2? I think they're asking for either one of them.
Well, in the past, you know, in the past, you've kind of done them as both depending on the property conditions. So in this case, it's not conforming for side yard setback, combined side yard setback and the coverage, it's not conforming now because it's a little bit over the coverage, so...
It's more of a C-2, no?
Usually, you've done them as C-2s because it's a question of what's the most convenient location for it on the property. In this case, the issue is really the coverage, it's not the location, right?
Not location, just coverage.
Okay.
So I think C-2 would make more sense.
Alright, so would you call the roll, Angela?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other business? Derek, did you want to tell the board that we've got potentially another member joining us?
Yes, sir. I believe his name is Jim Davidow and hopefully, he'll be joining us in December. He's supposed to be appointed this coming Monday at council, so I think we probably need one or two more. I know all you folks are here often, but we have some use cases, use variances coming up where people want to have seven voting members because you need five as a supermajority to pass it, so. So we're looking forward to that.
Good. We have two meetings in December.
We have a meeting on, special meeting on the 6th and then the 13th and then will be done until the end of January for our reorganization and we'll have a full agenda that night as well, so. But I'd like to thank everybody for coming out here and, you know, I appreciate your, your time and service and...
Good, alright. We are adjourned. Four minutes.